All right, well, good evening. This is a city council work session this evening. We've got two topics to go over, and that is, one is, or first up is the Malala Forest Road project update and planning update on that, and then the road maintenance fee. So first up is, I believe, I've got Calvin and Scott to take us through the Malala Forest Road. Take it over.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Hudson and Council. Yes, so Calvin Lassour, Economic Development and Tourism Coordinator, and then I want to also acknowledge that we have on the Zoom Mindy Montecucu, who is the Chair of our Bike and Pedestrian Committee, and I believe is going to help with the presentation as well. So I'm just going to turn it over to the two of them.
And actually, Mindy, if you'd like to unmute and introduce yourself.
There, now I'm up. Thank you for this opportunity. The Canby Community Vision adopted in 2013 is the template for the Traverso Development Plan and the Bike Pad Committee. That vision prioritizes the development of multipurpose trails and the pursuit of external connections in its parks and recreation plan, specifically Canby's Logging Road. The late Bob Traverso, Mr. Canby Rodeo himself, had the foresight and generosity to donate this property as parkland to celebrate Canby's heritage and to allow the city to safely build upon one of Canby's most used parks as we realize our community's vision. And over to Calvin.
Thank you, Chair Montecucu. Normally, I call her Mindy. I want to acknowledge the extraordinary efforts and time commitment of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee. I have to remind myself that these are volunteer commissioners. They've worked diligently with city staff and our council liaison to the Bike and Ped Committee, Greg Parker, to develop this plan. Thanks also to Clackamas County Tourism and Cultural Affairs for their generous financial support of this plan via a $35,000 grant won by the Bike and Ped Committee in City of Canby to support tourism development projects with regional significance. An important point is that while we're discussing this plan, I want to state clearly that Malala Forest Road remains closed to the public. It is not a public roadway, and access is only permitted for those adjacent property owners who hold easements to access their land. That said, I would like to introduce you to our smart and patient consultants, Ryan Farmcomb and Mike Pishka of Parametrics. We were very lucky to work with seasoned trails experts who kept us on budget to deliver a community-vetted phased implementation plan with cost estimates for the consideration of the council today. So over to you, Ryan and Mike.
Great, thanks very much, Calvin and Mindy and councilors. Great to be here tonight with you. As Calvin mentioned, my name is Ryan Farmcomb. I'm a project manager with Parametrics, and I've got my colleague Mike Pishka, our trails engineer. And Mike, do you have one second?
Hi, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for allowing us to speak. And definitely, as Ryan, I believe, is bringing up the presentation. So we'll say thank you for the opportunity here, and it's been a great project, and the support from the city has been great working with Calvin and everyone there as well. So.
Okay. All right.
And I'm just throwing this in there. Mike was operated the Canby Ferry for, I can't remember how many years, but anyway, he's familiar with our area.
Thanks, Mindy. To expand on that just a little bit, I used to work for Clackamas County in their Bridge Maintenance Division, so I've got a real strong understanding of the county roads and plans, and I was a relief ferry operator. So, but I do know the Canby Ferry in the city of Canby very well.
Great. Well, thanks again, everybody. And just to confirm, y'all can see my screen, the presentation? Okay, great. So we're going to breeze through some of the highlights of the process we went through with Calvin and Mindy and many others to create the development plan over the last six, nine months or so, some of the key findings that came out of the development plan, and then reserve our remaining time for questions. And I know we have till about 6:30, so I will make sure to be speedy through the overview. Please feel free to interrupt me at any time with questions. And then, like I said, we'll also maintain time at the end for discussion. So first, just to be clear about our study area for this plan, it's the Traverso Property Donation that Mindy mentioned. And if you look at this map up here, it's really the former Forest Road as it leaves the City of Canby in the southeast corner of the city and extends south along the Malala River by about three miles to Maxburg Road. And so our work really concerned this donation section and not really beyond that. That a look further south is for our future efforts. Some brief history, the Forest Road has been around for a while now. It's over 20 miles long, all told, under different ownership at this time. Obviously, the City of Canby owns a sizable section of it, part of which is today the Logging Road Trail. And as Mindy mentioned, the Traverso section was donated just a few years back. And then here we are, moving forward to 2020 and 2021, with the grant that the city received to create a development plan for outlining the future of the Traverso section. So just a couple of pictures to illustrate the existing conditions out there. Early in the project, our consulting team with Calvin and others went out there to tour the corridor. But there's a mix of conditions on the ground today. Here's a picture of the existing bridge over the Malala River. But some of the big features that are important for this corridor are the major washout, which I'm sure many of you are familiar with, on a section of the road from the 96 flood. The bridge across the Malala River that I just showed is largely intact, but the abutments, the connecting pieces of roadway to the bridge are damaged. The north section of the Traverso property in particular is used for access to private property by property owners along there. The washout section, just to the south of there, is not generally in use today. And then the southernmost section of the Traverso property to Maxburg Road is lightly used by farm equipment. But overall, there's a mix of intact road surface out there to completely overgrown and disused sections of the road in need of major repair. So in addition to existing conditions, the other major piece of input into our planning process was public outreach. We held a couple of online open houses. Given the pandemic, we didn't do in-person outreach, but we were able to reach a lot of people with these online houses, online open houses, several hundred in total. And we also did some targeted outreach, thanks to Mindy and some of her connections in the community, to some of the Spanish-speaking members of the Canby community to make sure we hear those voices as well. You know, overall, and I'll go through a couple of more specific messages here in a second we heard, but there was strong support and interest from the Canby community in the trail, and then concerns expressed from some, namely adjacent property owners, about potential impacts from a future trail. And that was really important to framing up the recommendations for implementation in the development plan. So briefly, a few of the results from our outreach, some of the top themes in terms of priorities that folks wanted to see, provide opportunities for all users to safely recreate was one of the top things we heard, but also opportunities to benefit the local economy and preservation of nature, and opportunities to work in environmental education. So other important issues that we heard about, ensuring safety, addressing concerns from private property owners, again, about privacy and access, and ensuring really that this trail accommodates a wide variety of potential users, cyclists, hikers, those who use mobility devices. I'm going to go through a couple of highlights of the development plan itself. So really, the goal of this planning effort was to create the next step towards a plan for capitalizing on this really substantial scenic and recreational asset that the city owns. So the plan includes a discussion of who the design user is for the trail, and the principles that we use to consider trail designs, includes trail design concepts, which I'll show here in just a second, some details about access points, the types of signage that's appropriate in the corridor, wayfinding, a phasing plan for improvements because of the cost of implementation and some of the difficulties in the corridor, we propose a couple of different ways of implementing the trail improvements. And finally, Mike and his team developed cost estimates for the improvements contemplated by the plan. So trail designs, we broke the segment, or the, excuse me, the trail into three segments for purposes of trail design, each with a slightly different, what we call cross-section. The northernmost section began from about southeast 13th, south to the end of the existing shared roadway. We actually proposed two different alternatives in the plan, and the final alternative would be left to a future phase of design, but the alternatives are not terribly dissimilar. One essentially involves some, a separated pathway for those hiking the trail, and a second alternative involves accommodating cyclists on the trail as opposed to on the roadway itself. We did hear during outreach an interest in separating cyclist traffic from those walking on the trail, so there seems to be a slight community preference for that. On the other two segments, again, heading south, so through the washout area, and then number three is down towards Maxburg Road, we propose more of a traditional shared-use path, a 10- to 12-foot paved multi-use trail for cyclists and those walking or hiking or jogging. And then in that southernmost segment, capitalizing on the existing roadway surface that's there to create a little more space for cyclists, and also preserve that width for continued farm equipment use of the road down there. So the total estimated cost with the preferred alternative in segment one and the other two segments I just discussed is about $5.6 million. And this is a conceptual cost estimate, which includes, you know, substantial contingencies and things like that. So as design is refined, those cost estimates will be refined down the road. There is a potential for local and federal permits that will be needed to move forward with implementation, and if federal funding is involved, in particular, the federal NHTA process would have to be conducted. And then in terms of phasing, we see a potential Phase One being the northernmost section of the Traverso property, which would connect to the existing logging trail, so about 13th, south to the end of the existing road. That's more of the low-hanging fruit section of the trail in terms of development. And then Phase Two would continue south of there, and that is the more complicated section, where there's the washout, the need to improve the bridge, so that one will take more time to come to fruition. So that's why we characterize that as a Phase Two. We did talk quite a bit during this process about river access, and we asked the public about that, whether there's a desire for river access and what concerns there might be about that. And there was mixed feedback, both from the public generally, the advisory committee that Calvin and Mindy ran. And the development plan ultimately does not specify whether river access should be encouraged as part of the development of the trail. Really, we didn't have enough time to thoroughly vet that conversation. So that is something that needs to have more conversation, more engagement with the community and property owners to figure out whether river access is appropriate and encouraged.
Hey, Ryan, I have a quick question there. The trail runs some small distance away from the Malala River. There's a land in between that trail and the river itself with some private properties on the other side of the road. Who owns that stretches of land? Is that the land in between the river and the trail?
There is a handful of private property owners, and, you know, I don't know if it's in the plan itself, but in one of the appendices, we've got a ownership map of the whole corridor. It's just kind of a patchwork of ownership out there. The corridor itself, where it goes across the river with the bridge, is where there is city ownership of conceivably access there, right? Thank you. So a couple other items that I'll breeze through here quickly, but I do want to mention these because they're very important. Again, to make sure we're responding to the concerns we heard during the process, we included a pretty robust operations and safety and security section of the development plan. A couple of highlights from that are, though we foresee that the City of Canby would be the manager of a future trail facility, that volunteers are really, really critical. This has been found with, this is the case with many, many trail projects nationwide, that volunteer groups are a critical piece of helping keep eyes on the trail, helping with maintenance. There's a wide variety of activities that volunteers can and should be involved in. Luckily, you've already got a great group of volunteers who are extremely motivated with this project, so there's a great base for that here already. Couple other items, safety and comfort, safety and comfort for everyone is obviously very important. The Clackamas County Sheriff has ostensibly has jurisdiction here. We see the potential for a future agreement or discussion with the county about law enforcement on this corridor, given it's a Canby-owned property in the county. And then finally, a recommendation we have is to establish a good neighbor program, which is really about coordinating with private property owners to make sure they know who to talk to if something comes up, make sure there's a person that they know they can reach out to, and also kind of a chain of custody as property changes hands, make sure that the new property owners know who to talk to and reach out to if there are any issues along the trail. So in terms of next steps, you know, I highlighted a couple of areas where there's additional refinement needed, you know, that question around river access, determining the final desired cross-section for the northernmost segment. A continued conversation with the community is really necessary to keep moving this forward. And then next steps are really seeking that next phase of design to move the project closer to construction. So with that, I will exit out of this presentation, and I'm sorry if I talked super fast, but I was trying to cover a lot as quickly as I could. And so I guess I just wanted to open up if there are any, first, any additional comments from, I guess, Mike or Mindy or Calvin on anything I overlooked, and if there's any questions or comments from councilors and mayor.
Sounded good to me. Thank you, Ryan.
I do have a couple of questions. It was mentioned that one of the concerns or comments, I guess, was about potential economic development along the trail. I'm unclear what that even potentially could be. And the second question is, in the meantime, that road that branches left where the intersection is with the gun club remains private. Who owns that road?
On the, on the first question, the economic development interest was more around the opportunities that having a larger trail system brings in terms of other people interested in using the trail, coming into Canby, spending money, that kind of thing, as opposed to economic development along the trail itself. It's more about users and where they spend their money.
And also, if I can chime in, it improves property values and, along with bringing in tourism and such, yes.
And I'm sorry, sir, the second question was on the...
The ownership of the road, it said it's still not public, it's still no trespassing, but I thought that the city already controlled that, so I guess not, but I'm wondering who does?
So the city does own that entire roadway corridor, and actually some additional property around it. As the road heads, I guess, left away from the gun club, the city ownership does continue along that.
So is that private, then? Is it no trespassing still?
Calvin, if you'd like. I can chime in here. Basically, because there have been no improvements, we're saying that it's not a public roadway, and it's not open to the public to access at this time, although it is owned by the City of Canby. Essentially, there are risks to people going out there, and really, the only people who have the legal right to be there are those who hold easements, who need to access their property, and, you know, the city staff and maintenance. But it's not ready for the public to enjoy right now, and there are safety risks involved with putting people out there currently. And just to give you an example, there's a bridge over Milk Creek, and it doesn't have any sort of handrails on it. It's a very narrow width, so it's just not ready, even though technically owned by a public agency. It's, you know, for the same reason, we don't let people walk around the wastewater treatment facility, if I can make that example.
And if I can chime in, the development plan shows that once improvements are made, the plan as it is now, but it needs further refinement, that the easement holders would continue to have access with their vehicles and equipment, but the only people who would be otherwise allowed would be city vehicles, no other vehicular use except for the walking and biking path. That portion would be allowed to the public, but otherwise, no other traffic, other than city and easement holders. Correct me if I'm incorrect there.
That's right.
Would it be possible for us to extend the no trespassing zone down to that Milk Creek Bridge? It strikes me that if residents are driving on the road, it couldn't be that unsafe for, I'm not sure how big of a market there is to walk down there, but if it's, like, if they're driving on it to get to their driveways, it couldn't be that dangerous.
Okay. Council President Hensley, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I was just kind of wanting to get a gauge on how far down the tracks this project is, and how much more public input we can get, because there has been a lot of conversation I believe, I'm always been, as Council Parker will attest, I'm a staunch firm, private property owner rights, right? Okay, we own this property, we should go do what we want with it. But at the same note, we need to be good neighbors. So I would like to get as many ideas on mitigation of the concerns as possible. And so I'm just wondering how much more time and room we have for that.
I'll answer that, Calvin, unless you... I think the short answer is that there is still a lot of time for discussion. The development plan is the first step and the first articulation of a desire there. But, you know, there is a, there is a need for ongoing outreach and engagement with folks through each phase of development of this. And so I perceive this being a longer term discussion with the community that we've just started.
Also, Tracy, just to let you know that it has been a topic of every meeting and conversation to make sure that those concerns are met. And there's a lot of benefit, we think, that would come from a lot of this with good design, recognizing the importance of the integrity and importance of agricultural practices. So, you know, we feel like that there's a way to do this by increasing law enforcement down there, people having cameras, things like that. But I do think that it's nice that it's the phased engagement, because probably the toughest part is this first section. And meanwhile, at the county level, we're trying to make sure that we're talking to the county to, and we think the city should too, watch out for the end of Elisha Road so that people don't start taking liberties at trying to go in from that direction, because that's the last thing anyone wants, for sure.
Okay. I believe this person was on Elisha Road. So I do plan to have coffee with them and listen to their concerns. I'll forward my notes after I hear from them.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, ironically, I bet, something that might not come as a surprise, the feedback and conversations I'm having with, with people are quite the opposite, and they'd like to see this move rapidly and they're excited to have this project come to. And that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be good neighbors, but, but I hear a completely different set of input about this project and I'm very excited about it. First, I want to thank Mindy, the advisory committee, and both of you that are here for making an effort to be inclusive with our Spanish speaking population. I think that they're often lost in our community conversations about where our community is heading. I just want to acknowledge and tell you how much I appreciate that you made that extra effort to engage them in this process. So my question is, it sounds like we have time, but, you know, should we proceed? When can this happen? I have people that are already excited to get down there and explore this trail. And so what, what kind of timeline are we actually looking at in terms of getting, say, phase one open to the public?
Mike, do you want to tackle that one?
I mean, a big part of that is going to come from the funding. So when the funding's available, but as far as the level of design, one of the other parts of the other phase one, too, is one of the larger areas we need to work through is the slide area and developing what kind of, how we're going to mitigate that, whether that's going to be a rebuild of that or a realignment. And with that, there'd be some potential, if we actually realign around the slide area, looking at some potential right of way needs. So those would all kind of add to that timeframe, but the biggest thing is really setting up that initial funding to advance the next phase. But, you know, once that's in place, right of way would probably take the most time out of, out of that relative to the design and then also as well with the public process. I mean, there's still a lot of that that needs to move forward, work through addressing public concerns and trying to meet, you know, get to all those amenities as noted by folks, you know, trail users and also residents as well. So, does that answer your question?
I appreciate that the question's complex, but I'm not really sure I have a sense of even in a broad and general and nonspecific sense of what that timeline looks like. So I appreciate that it's complex and there's no like two years, three years, not like that, but it do, let's say we acquire funding, once we acquire funding, is there like even an estimate on how long we anticipate it would take?
Yeah, see, something like this. So once the funding's in place, you know, if the, the trail design plan was proceeding forward, like I said, the public involved would be a major piece of that, but it could be done with, you know, design could be done within nine months to a year, depending on how much right of way is involved in that. And then construction, you know, the, the first sections where you don't have a lot of the structures, that can be fairly quick construction. I mean, you'd time that to be done seasonally, you know, maybe two or three months, depending on what section is built out and what is done. So, you know, that kind of brackets it a little bit.
So we're not necessarily talking about a decade. That's what I hear people that would like to get on it while they're still able to ride their bikes.
That's a common thing we hear on the Salmonberry. I'm involved in that project as well. And so that is a decade project because it's 80 miles and that funding is not in place. But yeah, no, this is, this would, depending on how it takes funding, this could be, you know, you could see, you could be out there within two to five years or less, depending on funding.
That's fantastic. Thank you for all you...
Actually, if I, if I can add a little bit to that, too, from my perspective here, this is, this is Scott. To Counselor Spoon's inquiry there, I think, you know, kind of even pulling back a little bit and looking at this as the bigger picture, this is exactly why we're coming to you tonight, counsel, is a progress report, if you will, on this planning process that has a lot of layers of complexity in terms of, you know, what, what it looks like and how it gets designed and so forth. But also, what is our, what is our priority to look at, you know, funding and managing this? Counsel, do you wish us to proceed down this path, pardon the pun? You know, really, this is like a check in with you to say where we're at. Is this, is this something you want us to expend city staff time and resources, continue to expend time on? The nice thing is this, this first design project was funded mostly by a grant. So we've spent some staff time, but really it's been volunteer based with our committee and, and some staff time, but it's been funded by a grant. But then we start getting into the construction and then ultimately the management. So I think we've got some bigger picture things we'll have to sort out at some point in terms of, is this managed by the city or is it managed by some, you know, coalition of, of, you know, private public partnerships or whatever? And so I just want to, I just want to make sure that that's part of the discussion or understanding. We're not going to solve those questions tonight. This isn't meant to be that in-depth of a discussion this evening, and we can certainly bring this back to you. But just wanted to put that out there that we, I think this warrants some of those types of further conversations as we continue to move forward.
Well, then I guess the rest of my question is, in terms of timing, the relationship between, I mean, I'm a fan of this project. I'd like to see us move forward. It's important that we continue the community engagement, resolve some of those issues. I'm all on board with that as part of it. But I'm more like, what's the relationship between this and the Park Master Plan? It feels weird to say, let's go, when we're just starting a Parks Master Plan process too. And I, you know, so hopefully there'd be, I assume you're indicating there'd be a marriage between the two. And we could say, go ahead and proceed and continue the community engagement, but we're not like, we're not, we can't go full in on anything, in my opinion, until we have the master plan. Is that where you're at, Scott?
Totally agree, yeah. I actually wanted to say that and I forgot to say that part of it. The master plan is a big part, the Parks Master Plan is, is a big consideration. And I think this is something we can just fold into that conversation. So, and, and, you know, determining what the community's priorities are and, you know, to continue that engagement forward. So yeah, thank you for that point, but I absolutely think this should be part of that discussion.
And also on that, the Canby Visioning Plan from 2013, which I outlined at the beginning, did show that as being one of our top priorities and more important, or also as the Parks Master Plan is being revamped, they've been kind enough to invite the Bike Ped Committee to be on the steering committee, a representative from. And so we'll be working with them on that. And in the previous Parks Plan, the extension of the logging road was in the previous plan, but that was from ages ago. So anyhow, also, just to let you know, it's on the county active transportation plan and the county TSP also. So there's a lot of, you know, this isn't just a brainchild out of the blue. So it is in a lot of plans and hopefully will continue to be. Thanks.
Counselor Verwig, then Counselor Tibbles?
Yeah, thank you. I think my questions were, were mostly answered in the last dialogue, but my questions were going to be, A, is this included, going to be included in Parks Master Plan? You guys answered that question, but the other question was around funding and how, how are we going to fund it? And so I think that's probably a question, Scott and Calvin, that you're going to be asking us as much as we're asking you. So I don't think that's an answerable question at this time. I definitely want to have that discussion very soon to make sure that we can fund this and that it's not, you know, I'm not a huge fan of going into a whole lot of debt to do it. And so I'd love to see what the options are for funding and if there's any kind of additional grant options to get to help fund it.
Yeah, before going to Jordan, I will say, Counselor Verwig, that a lot of the C4, sorry, Clockmouth County Coordinating Committee with STIP and fundage that is out there, there's quite a bit that is going to be going to trails and pathways. And so that is an opportunity for us to put this project and projects like it around our city into that, that process to see if there's grant money or, we'll say, grant money coming from that, that portion of the, the state funds.
If I can interject quickly, the, we, the city has been awarded a National Park Service Grant for Rivers Trails Conservation. And I forgot what the A is, but it's an RTCA grant. It's not a financial grant, it's not a funds grant, but it is a technical grant in helping us to figure out what agencies might need to come together to make things happen and where to find funding. So we will be getting some technical assistance. That we were just informed of that last week, I think, so.
Great. Counselor Tibbles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess the, one question I have is, what has been the general sentiment and feedback from the police community as well as all in general first responders of what kind of resources and challenges this project would, would bring up? And I kind of, I know you said it would be a share between Clockmouth County and Canby, but I just wanted to see if you can, you could speak to that specifically of how that relationship would work and also their, their risks and resource allocation to be able to take it on.
Actually, Mayor, if I, if you do recognize me, I spoke directly to the sheriff about this.
Hey, Counselor Parker?
Jordan, that was one of my first concerns, that in talking to the adjacent property owners, safety was, was a key concern. And following her election, I talked to Angie Brandenburg about this, what the trail was, where it was. She was aware of it. And, and she said in future conversations like this, that I could quote her as saying, that there is no reason to let concerns over police safety and first responder inhibit our ability to develop a public amenity. She said that public safety in the unincorporated area is her responsibility and it would be her duty to make sure this worked and that, that she would take the lead in working with other first responders and Canby police. So the sheriff was unequivocal in that any public safety concerns, she would take care of directly and answer the questions, but not to let those issues get in the way of developing a public amenity next to the river.
Also, at the stakeholder committee meeting, George Trow said that he loved the logging trail and they would be totally on board with coordinating with the county. And also, same response from Canby Fire, so.
Okay, thank you, Greg and Mindy. And I guess just to follow up to that, did they, like, are we even at the point where they would kind of give you a plan in terms of patrolling and frequency and what that would look like as a maintenance or is that an ongoing thing down the road? I'm taking it from the head nod, that's where I'm jumping the gun. Sorry, that's the military minded me, so I'll ask those questions later.
Thanks, Counselor Tibbles, appreciate it. Counselor Bangs and then Counselor Spoon?
Thank you. I had a question about the land ownership, but first I will point out, just because I think it's relevant here, that I'm on that jogging trail or that logging road many times a week, and I've never once seen any Canby police on it. So I'm not certain to what extent we are patrolling at all on those trails. I've not seen any issues either, other than graffiti. But my question is involving land ownership, this is going to be an extended section of Canby ownership stretching out from the city well beyond our urban growth boundary? Is there an issue with that? Is that okay? I'm totally in favor of this plan, I love it. But does this get us into any kind of legal issues involving controlling and owning land that's not in our city limits? There's no development planned.
I'll, I'll jump in on that. I'll look over my shoulder to Mr. Lindsay in case he wants to add anything, but I've got extensive experience with this subject matter and there's nothing that prevents our jurisdiction from owning property outside of our boundary. It really, you know, becomes a policy decision about managing that asset, what we want to do with it and whether we want to be the managers of something that extends, you know, in this case, portions of this extend well beyond our city limits or even our urban growth boundary. So it's an excellent question. And again, I think that goes back to what I was saying a bit ago, is this is an ongoing discussion we'll want to have with you, counsel, that it really is, we're going to, it is going, it's a policy decision. It's, you know, investment in the development and the ongoing management of an asset. And there's nothing that really prevents us from having property outside of our boundaries. So I think it's a question of the value to our, our Canby residents and our, and our, you know, taxpaying citizens.
Excellent, Scott.
This is Joe Lindsay, is, you know, we received this and now own it. And I guess to reiterate a point earlier, right, we, just because we own it doesn't mean it has to be open to the public. It can be publicly owned but not open to the public. But it is a bit of a liability to own land. And so we own land and so we have to be stewards of it, but we also have to make sure that if we have known traps or known dangers in our own land ownership and we, even if we don't have invitees out there, if we have trespassers and it becomes kind of that, the attractive nuisance idea, we do have a bit of liability in not using our land and actually advancing it to the point where it doesn't have dangers on it. So that's another flip side of land ownership, just to say.
So we have liability if we don't do the project as well?
Yes.
So long as we own the property, yes.
Makes sense.
Counselor Spoon and Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things. One, what's about funding in regards to Sean's project when I went, or question, when I went through the packet, like on page 30, bottom of 33 and third, top of 34 of the very large packet we have, it establishes the funding. Now, I assumed when I... large packet we have, it establishes the funding. Now, I assumed when I read this that, um, segment one A and one B would probably done, be done in a similar timeline. And then segment two could be done at a later date and segment three at a later date because there are unique challenges among that. So another thing to keep in mind in terms of the cost of the project from my perspective and someone else, you know, keep me in check if I'm wrong, is that we, we don't, not all the expenses come at once with phase. That's one of the beauties of phase projects, right? That, that the cost of phase one is a fraction of the total of that $5.6 million. It's not the totality of it. So in terms of funding, it's actually an ideal project because it allows us to open up access, see what the community thinks about it as, as it gains popularity and as we have opportunities to see how successful it is or isn't with the community, we can phase in additional funding for additional phases. So it's actually giving community concerns that exist about every project. It's kind of an ideal project that way, both funding wise and in terms of community input. Um, another thing, uh, what's kind of along the lines with what Joe said is, from my perspective, while everyone's always worried about, worried about public safety on, um, publicly owned land, it's probably actually safer. I mean, I don't know how often many of you use the logging road, but I was telling the story, I think last time too, I used the logging road. Uh, the last time I counted at nine thirty on a Tuesday, I counted fifty-two people going one direction. It's heavily used and I think that would continue out past the gun club. It's not like it would be a, a very lightly used trail. I think it would be a heavily used trail, which, which helps with safety. It's actually, in my perspective, a bigger risk undeveloped, uh, for both crime, trespassing, all of that, um, injury, uh, than it would be comparatively developed because our logging road, in my opinion, and I know another one or two of you have expressed this too, is our most widely and heavily used park. And actually developing it and having all that activity is better for public safety from my perspective. So just a couple of other thoughts about that.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
Thanks, Mayor. Um, I did want to bring us back to, um, how very special this is. That this is a project that was not started by a bureaucrat or a politician. Uh, this was a citizen-driven project. And not just a citizen-driven project, they went out and got the money, $35,000, uh, to conduct, uh, an excellent first phase. So, you know, this is what every city in the country wants to have, is a citizen involvement program that is so robust, uh, that, uh, the city policymakers are running to catch up with it. And, uh, I know I've talked to the mayor and city manager for a while. I said, you know, we really do need to get this in front of the council, uh, because we've got some people that are working very hard on this. Uh, Jordan, to your point, uh, yes, public safety is, is going to be critical. I'm going to be watching that. I'll bring you on as a co-partner, uh, on that as, uh, we get down to that point. Um, and, and Tim Dale's no longer with us on the council. He's still very robust. Uh, but he would say of a thing like this, that, um, it's good for us to plant a seed for a tree that we will not rest under. And for some of this, some of us, uh, this may be a project that we will not see to fruition. Um, but for many years I lived in, uh, the city of Salem and occasionally walked down to this blackberry patch mess, awful place, and look over the blackberries to the Willamette River. And we got a citizens committee started and, uh, ten years later, ten years later, uh, the Riverside Park opened up. So these are things that take a, a while. Um, the good news is, uh, we've got the perfect city manager for this. This is somebody, uh, who, who understands the logistics, uh, of operating something. So to bring this around to full loop where I think staff wants us to be is, uh, what do we want you guys to do? Uh, so my opening bid is, this is something I would like us to keep pursuing, uh, keep on top of, see how this integrates into the, uh, Park Master Plan. And at the conclusion of the Park Master Plan, have this presented back to us for, uh, decision points, um, that, uh, things, as, as this progresses, the decisions that we have to make, uh, will become clearer. The question tonight is, do we want staff to continue, uh, to pursue this? And so my vote is yes.
Thank you, Counselor Parker. Any other comments or questions, uh, regarding this right now? Counselor Bangs?
I would just also, uh, support this project and moving forward with it. I, I don't know if that was clear. It certainly meant to, to be clear, but I'm also a solid yes on moving forward with this.
Yeah, it's a great project. I mean, it, uh, Mindy, um, and to the Bike and Ped Committee, thank you very much for, um, continuing to drive this and, and be a force behind it. This is great. Um, if we, it is, it's, it's beautiful, um, beautiful country, beautiful path out that direction. And there's a tremendous amount of, amount of potential that that has, um, for, um, biking, uh, equestrian, and, you know, I was reading in there too, because I know that's something that, you know, great opportunity for horseback riding and whatnot. So, um, there's a lot more yet to come and, and to be worked on. And I think in folding this into the, um, Park Master Plan, um, is going to be a, a big part, um, of seeing this, get the funding and, and move it forward. So, um, yeah, I think that's going to be a, a key next step for sure. So, um, Counselor Spoon, did you have something else?
Yeah, just a question for staff. I think it's clear that I'm on the same page as Greg and Chris, but, um, maybe an idea as we move it forward, as we get past the Parks Master Plan, is if we could, um, as a group safely go visit it, the people that are interested and see it. I think that would really open people's eyes to what this can be. I mean, I grew up here. I spent some afternoons there. Um, and so it's, I, I think that you kind of need to see it to really having to have a whole picture of what it could be. And so my ask would be that after we get through the Parks Master Plan, that maybe the next decision point, there'd be an opportunity for us to go see parts of it as a group, if that's okay.
Yep. That's a great idea. We could, we could make that happen. The staff would have to go.
Counselor Tibbles?
Yeah, um, I, just to kind of say where I'm at on it, I, I am, um, in support of it, uh, continuing to be pursued. I would, my one comment would be that a little bit, um, more of a robust security and, uh, first responder plan towards the beginning, uh, versus later, because I would kind of want to know what those risks, risks are before the costs go into it and the different phases and knowing that upfront. But in general, yeah, I mean, I'd love to see that, um, that helps, you know, the, the outdoor scene, the, the joggers, the runners, the, I think it's a great project. Um, but I would want to know all those things because there are risks associated with it and so that everyone felt comfortable moving forward. So that would be my one, one note.
I agree, Jordan. Thank you, sir. Okay. Well, to the consultant group, thank you very much for your work on this. This is a, a, the level of detail and, and, uh, projection outward, as Counselor Parker pointed out of, you know, um, what could be, can, um, completed here within a reasonable timeframe is very much appreciated. It's a great, great plan. So thank you for, um, the due diligence on it. And, and, uh, I know that we, there will be more to come on, on this as we dive into some of those pieces that were brought up this evening. So thank you both for being here tonight and for presenting. This is great.
Thanks so much for having us. Really appreciate it. It was really great working with all of you.
Mindy, thank you as well. Keep it up. All right. Um, we're going to segue now into, um, a conversation on the street maintenance fee. Um, and Scott, I'll let you take that over.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Um, so for, for time's sake, um, we've got a little over half hour before the regular meeting is supposed to start. Um, so Julie Blums, our finance director, is joining me up here at the table. Um, Jerry Nalzine is also here just, uh, for helping us with any questions that might come up. Um, as I think most of you are aware, the, the street maintenance fee, um, was established in 2008. Um, the current rate that was set, uh, the $5 for a single-family residential, um, home on a monthly basis has not changed since that point in time. And so there's been some discussion about, do we want to make any modifications to that? Um, and, um, so this, this, uh, pro, uh, this discussion with you this evening is based on, uh, feedback on, on a number of occasions that you were interested in having some further discussion about our street, street fee, uh, maintenance program. Um, what we'd like to do is Julie's going to walk you through a presentation of, uh, kind of where we've been and where we're at, what this provides and perhaps some, uh, options for you to consider. Uh, and, uh, then of course you can, um, ask those questions and we'll be hap, happy to help, uh, provide any information. Um, we may, we may need to, uh, I think that first conversation about the trail, uh, was, uh, was an excellent one and, uh, was a little bit longer than anticipated. So we may need to, uh, put some additional time on another work session if, if needed, and we'll be happy to do that. But we'll at least get this information presented to you tonight, kind of get you started on the conversation. So I'm going to turn it over to Julie.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilor. So I normally talk fast. I'm going to talk really fast. So, um, sorry, we're, our configuration is a little weird to be able to move the slides. So. Here we go. Okay. So, um, as Scott had said, the street maintenance fee was, uh, created back in January of 2008. And, um, it was created to maintain and repair and reconstruct city streets. Um, and that includes, you know, the actual construction and overlays. It includes administrative functions that need to be done along with that. Um, and, uh, any monitoring, assessment, um, review of, of the streets themselves and just adjacent pattern between the curves. So I know that you can all read this, um, but this is a map of all of the streets that have already been paved with the street maintenance money from 2008 through 2021. And it's 31.5 centerline miles. And that means, excuse me, that's an entire street. So lane miles is, you would basically double it because it's both sides of the street. So this is, um, there's a chart of what our pavement condition index means. And what this, what a pavement condition index is, is they rate your streets based on, you know, are there cracks or there potholes, just the, the level of, um, quality of the street. So if you get a PCI of a hundred, your street's excellent. You don't need to do anything to it. Um, and as you can see, the, the ratings, uh, go down and this chart shows, oops, it didn't move. Sorry. There we go. So in 2018, we hired a company to come in and do a full review of all of our streets in town, uh, 54.03 centerline miles. And what they came back with is that the average PCI for our streets was 75. And they put together some, uh, cost packages depending on what level we wanted for maintenance. So the first column there, uh, is what we're currently spending on average per year, $670,000. And after a five-year period, that would result in us actually going backwards and we would have an average PCI of 72. To just maintain the current 75, we would need to spend at least a million dollars a year. If we wanted to increase it, um, there's two options there. One, if we go up five points to an 80, um, that would require just under $2 million a year. And if we went to an 84, it would require about $3 million a year. Now, 84 is what the industry recommends that you set your, your PCI goal to. Um, but that is something that we haven't quite gotten to, uh, here. And we'll talk about that a little bit more in the next couple of slides. So this is, uh, the average life of a road. So when you pave it, the average life is about 17 years. If you have some sort of maintenance program. If you don't have a maintenance program, it cuts the life of your year, or the life of your road almost in half. So instead of it lasting 17 years, you're going to be paving it again in eight to 10 years and then again at the 17, 18-year mark. And it, on average, it costs about $15 a square yard to a, and do an overlay on the road. And a maintenance program, which would include some sort of slurry program, um, the kind that we have done in the past on like city property is called a micro slurry. And I'm not going to get into the details of it because it's way over my head, but Jerry says it's really good stuff. It's better than what most cities use and it doesn't create the, the road gunk that, um, most people don't like with the slurry seals. But if you do that every six to eight years, it's only 300, $3.70 a square yard, but it keeps your road twice as long. So there is a cost benefit there to having some sort of maintenance program. So the street fee rates, as Scott said, everybody thinks of them, they're $5 per month. Well, that's true for residential. There's different rates depending on multifamily, senior housing, uh, that sort of thing. And then for non-residential, it's based on trips, which every res, uh, non-residential business has a trip calculator. We use it in SDCs as well. And so they, they pay based on the number of trips that people, the average number of trips that people would, um, use the roads to come to their business each day. Okay. So here's the fun part. So I went back and looked at what the construction cost index was for the last 10, 11 years. And if we had done increases every year based on that construction cost index, which we also use for our SDC increases annually, at this point, we would be at $6.90 per household per month. And we're still down at the $5. What that equates to, so this blue line is what we have, uh, brought in in revenue. Had we increased it along the way, we would be at 8.2 million. So we have foregone as much as $1.3 million by not doing any rate increases for the last 12 years. Back in 2008, 2009, when we implemented this, our $5 was worth $5. It is now worth $3.10. Um, because cost of materials, labor have gone up, but our fee has not gone up. So we can't buy as much with that $5 as we could back in 2009. So this is some options for you. This is the cracks, um, that we've been talking about for a few years, I guess. This is the cracks that we've been talking about for a few years, I guess. What do we do? What's the right increase, if anything? So I put together several options or scenarios for you, and these aren't set in stone. You can, you know, run whatever scenario you would like. But if we continued at $5 annually, over the next five years, we would bring in just over $3 million. So not much more than what we have been. If we did an increase based on the construction cost index every year from here forward, it would go up to about 3.4 million over five years. If we did another scenario where we just added a quarter every year, it would bring us up to about 3.6 million. So, you know, it, it's helping, but we're still not getting there. So I ran numbers. If we started with the base being where we could have been, the $6.90, and did annual increases based on the construction cost index, which I estimated to be about 2.5% as an average over time, then that would bring us up to about 4.5 million dollars over five years. Now, to get us to the option where we are just keeping steady at the 75, we would have to set that rate at $7.75 and then do annual increases as well. So there's lots of options. The, the biggest question is, as a council, what do you want to set the target for the PCI to be that we're working towards? Because that is really what's going to drive how we get there, how much we need to, to raise in revenue to, to be able to accomplish that. Like I said, the industry standard recommends 84. A lot of cities do anything between 80 and 84. We've seen everything in between that. So, but I don't, I'm not asking you to make a decision tonight because this is a lot of information in a very short period of time. But this was really meant to put before you some, some information to help you kind of digest and get a sense of what it is going to take for us to keep our roads maintained. And do we want to start looking at some sort of maintenance program? Because if we don't, these costs are going to be probably another two-thirds higher over the same period of time without a maintenance program. I'm done talking.
And just again, to be clear, I'll add one more thing, Council. And yes, we just wanted to present this information to begin a conversation with you. When Julie says, do we want to have a maintenance program? That is, instead of waiting every, as she discussed, about an average of 17 years to do a full replacement or overlay, do we want to consider adding that interim step of doing a, a mic, the, the slurry seal or a micro seal program, which we don't currently use on our public roads? We use those in maybe driveways and parking lots, but not, not so much on our public roads. And that's a way we could extend the life of our roads. So that's, that's a consideration as well.
So question I have is, how quickly does the road deteriorate if we're at 75 versus 85? Like, how quickly does the PCI deteriorate?
The, the study that was done said that once it reaches a level of poor, let me check, go back to that slide. Here we go. So once it hits a, a level of fair, the, it, the drop-off steepens. So it's an additional 40%. So the lower it gets, the quicker it gets degraded. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Okay.
But I mean, that, but I, I get that. So I guess it just, it's a matter of looking at that, that 75 to 85, like in that window, if we stay in there, you know, is that, is that maintenance versus redoing?
Right. The, the fair grouping is a 60, 50 to 69. So if we want to stay above that, we need to be somewhere between a 70 and 100 to keep it above that steep drop-off of a 40%. The, the other issue is, this study was done in 2018, and we haven't, and it was based on the recommendation of doing a maintenance program. So Jerry and I were talking about this, and, you know, in the next year or so, year and a half, we probably need to do this again and ask them to give us costs based on having a maintenance plan and not having, you know, some sort of slurry plan so that we know you guys have good information of how much it's going to cost under each scenario.
Okay. Counselor Spoon, and then Counselor Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Julie. A few questions, I'll try and get through them quickly. One, can we get a copy of this PowerPoint? There's some information I'd like to digest at a little bit slower pace than we had to go for this, and it wasn't in the packet.
Yeah, it just got finished today, so.
Okay.
We'll, we'll get you a copy.
Great. On the slide that shows the, the one that we're looking at, the cost per square yard, one, do, do we do the micro slurry ourself, or do we contract that work out?
Jerry says it would be contracted up.
Okay. So is that dollar per square yard is not the cost of the ingredients, not the ingredients, the materials? We're not eating the roads. The materials to, to pave the roads, that's the total cost contracted out, including labor and everything? That's not just materials?
Jerry says that is everything.
Awesome. Okay. And then, um, where, Jerry, could you, because I have never paved anything before. I made a patio, but I didn't use micro slurry. Could you maybe tell me or email me later a place where I can go see? I just, I want to understand what it is and how it's different than what we do to our roads. Could you maybe give me an idea of where I could go see some? I just want some context for what that is and how it's different.
The best place to see where the product we'd be using would be Public Works in our shop. We haven't done, we've, we've, and just to, to reiterate on the paving on that, our, we got this funding in the right time, and we've been playing catch-up. And so the overlays, we've been doing around three miles a year or so of overlays. And once in a while, throw in a slurry seal in, and you know how that's all gone. You guys have gotten pretty beat up over them. And, and I, I don't think the right material was used. I don't think you guys, we were educated enough at the time. But right now, we're starting to get caught up on our roads. You can see we're at a 75, and maintaining them is a good deal. But maintaining with some sort of maintenance program would be smart. But Sarah, if you want to take a look at the material we, we have down there, anytime you want to drop in, I could show you what we, what we use. And I can actually show you the materials that I have left over of what goes into it.
That'd be awesome. Maybe I'll just shoot you an email and I can hop out there. I just want some better context because I like to have an idea of what I'm, what the difference is. But my last question is, you, it seems like towards the end, you gave us some, some general ideas of how the pricing could be changed, including the index. Is, could you go to that slide for a minute? The last one.
Oh, the very last one.
Yeah. That had the pricing. Yeah. So is, yeah. Is there a place, I mean, I always want to be conscientious of how, you know, $3 a month is significant to some people, especially if we add the CCNI, and, and I want to be conscious of that. And obviously, we'd have a public hearing and get input if we went this way. But is there somewhere between where we are now and going immediately to the 690? Like, would there be an option to maybe do an incremental increase, like a dollar plus the CCI adjustment every year until we get caught up? Or, or can we at least explore that if, if we're going to address it again? If anyone else is interested in something more incremental? Yeah, I'm, I'm open-minded to what the answer is here. I think that I, there is, there is one thing that ties our entire city together, and that's a desire for nice streets. I think we've all experienced that on, on council. Everyone wants good streets. And, and I'm willing to take the steps necessary to make sure we can continue that. But maybe, I guess, with public input, or maybe another incremental option between $5 and 690 plus CCI or 775. If that's not, if that doesn't make sense in terms of how it pans out, in terms of getting caught up, that's, I'll accept that answer too, but.
But we can, I can run any scenario you would like. I'm willing. I definitely can add, send you guys out what it would look like if we did a dollar per year plus what the inflationary increase is. It would be a little more than a dollar each year.
I, I would be interested in that, but if no one else is, I'm not going to make you do the work. I'm just, I just kind of want to see what all of our options are in terms of pricing so that when we get public input, they're aware that there's, you know, options available to, and, and that, you know, we've really taken into account the people that, you know, where a few dollars a month makes a huge difference. So.
Right.
Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Parker?
Well, Julie, I don't think you spoke fast at all tonight. I think you did a splendid job. Let me give, let me run this by you, see if this is an accurate summation. So the more we spend, the less we spend?
The more we spend, the, yes. Yes. Over time.
I remember when Danielle Callen was Assistant City Manager in Wilsonville, and she was in charge of the street project. And she showed me the conclusion of their 10-year program to bring the streets up to the highest level, and it dropped her yearly maintenance by 20%. And I said, that's almost magic. And she goes, no, you know, think about your house or your car, that a well-maintained car is going to cost you less than big later on. So I, I like the staff report. You did a good job on this. You gave us targets, and now we're going to have to see how much we can swallow politically in terms of asking our citizens to support it. But my, my preference is to find a way for us to get to the top level of maintenance because the science is there to show that it will save money. We're going to have to be the ones that take the political hit in the short run for raising the revenues to get us there. And so there's not going to be anybody around in 10 years thanking us on the streets for saying, thanks for doing that, because now we're paying less in maintenance fees. But it, it sort of makes sense that if, if we, if we take the pain now and invest in our roads, then later on, we won't have to spend so much. And, and I, I second Sarah's opinion. I mean, that this is a balancing act on, on, on how much tree we raise and how fast we raise it. But I'd like you to present us with a couple of scenarios. What's, what is the best scenario for us to get there as fast as we can? And, and what's, what's the slowest scenario, I guess? So we have a spectrum to choose on. That's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
From, from the report that was done, we, in order to get all our roads up to an 84, it would take $15 million. And again, that's including having a slurry program. So, you know, the last option on this slide just keeps us at the 75. So basically, triple that, and that will get us 15 million over five years. And that's a very hard number to swallow.
Counselor Banks, then Verwick, then Tibbles.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do we have a, actually, I'm guessing we don't. So Julie, I'm asking if you can give us one more piece of information. What is the difference between this CCI, the Construction Cost Index, and a Consumer Price Index? My concern is not so much the, the cost. Well, my, my concern is that the cost of construction will inflate at a faster rate than our taxpayers' own income. So, so I wouldn't mind seeing the, what the difference is between CPI and CCI. I'd hate to have us index it to something that we cannot really afford in the long run. I will add, in, in regard to Counselor Spoon's comment, I'm less interested in phasing it in. If we go, if we go right up to the $6.90 a month, we're looking at a tax hit of $22 or $23 per family. And if we go up to the top market there, at, from, from 690 to 775, we're still looking at a $33 in one year change. So I don't know how, how much time we need to phase it in. The second question I have is, do we have any population projections on the aging of our population? We have people in elderly housing that pay a discounted rate, and if for the, if, if the percentage of our population that qualifies for that grows over time, that that'll create a additional problem with our steep street maintenance program? Especially because they're paying so much less than, than the non-elderly people.
Right. But I do not have an estimate on that. Do we have a source for that?
We can, we can see if we, we need to work with the, or something.
We, we'll look into how we might be able to do that.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how successfully we can forecast that down the road. And even, I would like to see what the difference is between CCI and CPI is. You know, I hate for us to have a, you know, a stagflation situation, but the cross, the cost of paving goes skyrocketing, and then people are having a hard time maintaining that.
Well, I, I will tell you, over the life of this program, the average annual construction cost index is 2.7 per year.
So that sounds pretty similar. Perhaps just a little bit higher than CPI.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Verwick, then Counselor Tibbles.
Yeah, thanks. Jerry, the micro slurry, how much longer does that extend our roads? Is it, is it double the length of time before we have to repave them? Or is it a, what percentage?
It depends on when you get it on, you know. But yeah, you could potentially, if it's applied right, you get the right product, you could double the life of it. It's just, we've never been to a point where we could start getting to that point to apply anything like that on the newer subdivision that just got paved. So I have to go off of what this report we hired this company to do. So just reading their facts and everything else, and talking to other cities that have used them too, that have applied it, it does buy a lot of time.
It seems if we can double the life of the roads and for, like, you know, 15, 20% of replacing them cost, that makes a lot of sense. So I definitely would love to see what, you know, what it would cost to, to do that maintenance program. I think that's a good, a good move.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Tibbles?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Julie. I really enjoyed the presentation, what was a whole bunch of different moving parts and possibilities. You would think it would be really, you know, the possibility of being lost and hard, hard to follow. I, I actually followed it rather easily, and, and I thought you articulated it well. And, and that just made me, one, I'm, I'm obviously down, I'm focused on continuing down the path of what makes the most sense from the taxpayer perspective, as well as not having such an instant impact. But also, I believe that as a, as a council member and as a citizen, I believe we've all heard our citizens tell us that they want better roads and better quality roads. So I don't know what this, maybe this is a Joe question, but once we decide what that rate that makes the most sense in the increase looks like, what does that look like in terms of actually presenting it to the voters versus us deciding this? Because.
Fee is not a tax, so you do not present it to the voter. It is a decision you can make because it's a fee. It is a decision you can make because it's a fee.
It's a decision we can make right now because it's a fee, but can we make, now that we're talking about permitting that to be potentially a higher fee and fixed to something else? Could that no longer be a fee and actually a tax?
You have a hearing open to the public, but it's a fee, it's not a tax.
Right. So Counselor Tibbles, you will see this in two weeks. But every year, we bring forward our master fee schedule to the council for updates. And we do it the last meeting in June, when we do our budget adoption. And that is where we update any kinds of fees like this. As Joe said, it's not a tax, so we're not required to go to the voters for increases. But that is where we bring forward those fee increases every year. And we typically do a public comment period on that so that the public has an opportunity to speak on it. But that'll happen in two weeks. And I know that we are not going to make a decision on this to have this included in the fee schedule for June 16. I do not expect that at all. But that is normally how the process would work.
Okay. And so can you help me understand, Joe, with the fee and the tax structure? How, I guess, the little history on how it got designated that way? And did we have the option for it to be considered a tax out of the gates? And that's not the path we went? Because now we're talking about a sliding value potentially tied to an index and an increase. So, you know, it sure smells a lot like a tax.
Yeah, it's just been held that certain programs like this, when you call it a fee and it operates in a particular way where it's for a particular thing, much like your park maintenance fee, that's been allowable under the law as not a tax, but as a fee. So just the way in which it operates it under law has been held that it's a fee and not a tax. Right? We could talk more about that later. But the case law backs it up. And so, I mean, you're not alone in that other folks have come in and said, it's government charging me. But we charge for all sorts of things, all sorts of services that we provide. And this is one that is allowable under law.
Okay, thank you for, I mean, so allowable but not required?
Oh, it's not required. You could have no fee. You could even have, I've seen other jurisdictions have other fees that they charge as part of their bills monthly to folks. And we could talk about those too, but I don't want to.
Okay, we can talk, yeah, I'll probably, I'll ask you additional, I'll send you some additional questions just so I have clarification on it. And for time's sake, I'm just, obviously, to me, that seems like a very, very fine line that really doesn't have a lot of clear definition. But the case law, I'm sure that you could, if you have an hour ahead of your time, and probably take the full of it to explain it to me. So I appreciate it.
Well, that's cool. We can talk more. And that's understandable. We've had folks come in and argue this in the past, especially after it was instituted. So, but I mean, we also do this for our parks maintenance too. So just saying.
Okay, last question is Counselor Hensley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The fee schedule is largely made up of fees that are optional to the public for options that they want to use. The street maintenance fee and the park maintenance fee is being put on every citizen whether they want it or not. So it is another three-letter word for tax. Whether we can do it doesn't mean we should do it. And I'm not going to be for raising this without going to the vote of the people.
Okay, we are at 7:31. We need to begin our city council meeting. And so I think this was a wet-the-whistle work session, or it ended up being that way because the first piece took a little bit longer. So what I'm hearing and seeing for the next time we need to bring this back in further conversation is, what level do we want the PCI to be at? Long-term or, you know, oscillating between? And then the maintenance program, i.e. the adding of the microseal piece? And then, the, what do we look at in terms of dollars and cents? And how do we get to that point? So there's a couple of other pieces coming forward. Am I leaving anything off in terms of where we're at currently with this conversation?
I captured it well.
I tried to. So when we come back to this conversation topic, because this will be coming back quickly because, you know, this is a, I view our roads as an asset to our city. And yes, people want nice roads to drive on and whatnot. It's about how to get there. So we need to figure that out sooner than later as we see that $5 is no longer keeping things where they're at. Maybe that's okay. Some is better than none. And then we just got to figure out, if that's the case, then where else do we go? More to come. So Scott and I will work on the agenda to bring this back as a continued conversation piece on the agenda. Julie, thank you very much. This was very informative. I appreciate it. Did, brought forward what I was hoping it would. And so we will circle back and figure out what the next conversation looks like in greater detail. I'm going to end our work session. Counselors, do we need, and staff, do we need to take a quick break?
Yes, please.
Okay. We are going to take a quick break. And we will reconvene as quickly as say. I've got 7:34 on Cupertino's time. So 7:40, we will convene the city council meeting. Thank you, everyone.